Yeah.
All right, I was telling Jonita, we had parents and teachers gonna come, but where we've rescheduled it, it's kind of got lost still.
Right. Go ahead, Ms.
Day motion to return.
Motion.
Motion by Randy, Seth, Mark, Beech, and Randy and Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
You vote. Motion carries five zero, it is five seventeen. And we'll begin the second half with our special meeting here at Pritchard for the local school from the council presentation.
Take it or what?
All right. Well, I want to thank you guys for coming and excuse my hoarseness of my voice. Try to get through this as best I can. So, welcome to Pritchard Elementary. This is my first year here so far, it's been a great year. First year as administrator. I've taught here for over fifteen years and it has been a delight. It's my home, a different home. Just want to start with some data. To, and then I'll go into some other things maybe, but start with our enrollment data. If you can get this, you can see this year is our lowest enrollment we've had for a while. We have a large group of student, uh, fifth graders leave. But we have had several come in this year as well, but I do think that due to the post scholarship, I do think several of our students did take advantage of that even more to improve our charter schools. So, special education data, we also, some of those came to our school. Came with IDPs, so this might be a little higher now, but not a lot of fluctuation over the years with our special population. This is some data from our general representative assessment from the end of, of the year. And this goes back all the way to two thousand fourteen, we see some trends. One thing we're really proud of is our math scores, that's the blue line. As you can see here, we've stayed pretty high on that and pretty consistent over the last few years. My mic's working now, let's. Um, we, our biggest concern clearly is reading this year, and that is one of our goals. That's what we pushed in our PLC meetings. That's what our teachers are asking for more resources, more help of how we, how are we gonna improve this? And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but as you see too, our science score in the red had quite a drop, but we'll look at some current data this year too that I think is pretty exciting. This is the, from last year, our proficiency rate, five grades that yearly beat our third graders. This is last year's third graders. Um, now this year's fourth graders. And you can see here the trends from last year. We'll give you some more updated, um, benchmark data, just a second. So, this is the years prior, we do use that data quite a bit, but this is kind of what we're looking at now. So, this would be, um, our benchmark scores from fall, they took it in September. Um, and then we just took it, uh, in January. So, you can see growth here, this is third grade ELA, so we see growth and that's always good. Also, what we like to see is this red shrink. And as you can see in each column, the red is getting smaller in that, um, second, that second benchmark. Math is the same way, we see growth in, in all those parts, but we still have some work to do. And like I said, when we meet in our PLC meetings, um, as a team, we look at this data, we break it down, see where the skill gaps are. And then too, after a bigger, especially math, just some of those skills haven't been taught yet. So, we're excited to see how far they go, um, by May. Here's fourth grade, same, um, data. We'll, we still see growth, we're seeing the red shrinking, the green growing, that's what we want to see. Just showing that growth, this is ELA, ELA's along the top and math is along the bottom. So, we're seeing growth in all those areas, so that's good. And this is our fifth grade. So, the top is the ELA and the bottom is math. What I want to note is in the bottom, all the way to the right, you see operations, algebra, and everything. So, this last time we took a benchmark, there were no students who did not, um, land in the red. So, all of our students landed either in, um, you know, almost at meeting the standard or meet standard. And that even includes our special ed population, so we're pretty proud of that as well. This is our science scores, that's what I was telling you. This is more updated, so last year our scores were down, we, in our science teacher, we departmentalized here at Pritchard. So, we have a teacher who solely teaches science and she uses Project Lead the Way and Foss Science and some other things. She's been doing this for years and she is fantastic. And she really pushes the students, her standards are very high, as you can see from our scores. So, if you look here, at the top, that is the state average. Just below that's our district, our county. And then our school is a third down. Twenty-four percent of our students halfway through the year already exceed the standard in science. And that science, that science test is not easy. It's a lot, really hard thinking, um, deeper level thinking, problem solving. Um, so we are extremely proud of that. And then twenty-four percent of those students also meet the standard. So, we're looking at that thirty-five percent and excited to see how much that grows. Another great thing is that bottom column, that is our special ed population. So, we have students who scored, who exceeded standards, who met standards, and those students are identified as having special needs. So, big kudos to our special ed teacher, our science teacher, who really pushes these students, you know, no matter what challenges they may have. Now, this data is from Star Literacy, what Star Literacy is, it's gonna, it's what we use to kind of gather data for our younger students. This is Star Early Literacy, and we give this benchmark in the fall and the winter, just kind of like the benchmark assessment I showed you earlier. Um, you're foreseeing growth in kindergarten, and I noticed that in first grade, it drops down to fifteen. Um, of course, that's a concern of ours, it's on our, on our watch for sure. However, it's important to know that when students are in first grade, at one point, they switch from taking Star Early Literacy to the Star Reading Test, and that's much more difficult, and it wouldn't have been the first time they see that test. So, I would say that number is, is partly because of that. But we, we definitely are watching that, or we're glad, or, um, the grade we're seeing here in kindergarten, which actually, CC two, that's actually pretty high already. They've been, they've been really high in kindergarten. Um, this is the Star Reading that I was talking about, and we, we see growth in every category there as well. Fourth grade, the group is pretty small, um, so we're focusing on some skills there, but still, again, um, we're not sure too, sometimes you gotta consider, you know, classroom performance, does that really match? Or was it a bad day? Star Reading is a little quick test sometimes, and so, um, we kind of have to compare that to classroom performance as well. So, we'll see how they do this upcoming benchmark. But we do use this data in our, in our PLC meetings to really guide our instruction. This is math, star math. Growth in all of those categories as well. Fourth grade math grade was huge. Quite a bit there. These are students reading the grade level, um, students that are reading on grade level. Second grade fifty percent, that's, that's good for halfway through the year. Um, again, you can see why this is, um, Pritchard's focus this year, is, um, reading scores. I want to say too, and I'll get to this in just a second, that our math scores, I'm just really impressed with that star math that you saw because we have a grading curriculum this year. All our teachers are, um, using that curriculum and to still see that kind of growth. Um, with using that, I think that really, um, says a lot for the curriculum itself, for our teachers that are implementing math, so I think that is definitely worth pointing out. Here's our attendance data, it's actually really good, um, better even than the years prior. So, in the fall, we were seventeen, in the winter, during the six months, six months, we were at fifteen point five, it actually improved. Our biggest concern really, um, as a staff, has been tardies. And, um, class and instruction at the time has been missed due to tardies. So, um, Genoa started what they call the tardy taters. And we have implemented that as well this second semester, and we're calling our timely taters. And when a classroom has all their students present and all their students on time, then they can add a piece to Mr. Potato Head. When Mr. Potato Head is complete, we're gonna celebrate that, um, with some kind of party or a little dance or something fun, just to give them that incentive. And, and hopefully to improve those tardies, your attendance as well. Just want to spotlight a few things that we have going on here at Pritchard. This is the gym of Wayne County, and I think a lot of people realize how special this little school is. And I'm just gonna show you a few of the things that we have going on that set us apart from some other schools. Our AR program, which is Accelerated Reader, that's a program that encourages students just to read more books. They take quizzes on the books, and when they pass those quizzes, they get points, and it's all calculated on the computer with our Renaissance program that our county utilizes. Our grandparent volunteer has taken that program on, we actually were at boarding and presented about our AR programs, you guys are familiar with it. Um, but today you can actually get to see some of the things they do. Um, you know, Nana, she got donations from the community to provide those prizes and incentives. And this year, so far, just halfway through the year, Pritchard Elementary students have read four thousand five hundred and twenty-four books. So, we're really impressed by it, really proud of that. And the kids are very excited to move up in those AR clubs. And so, I encourage you, you know, when we're finished here, to walk out to the front hallway where you came in there, and you'll see our AR board and how we track, um, what club students in. And you can see what prizes they get at each level, so it's, uh, we, we're really, really proud of that. Also, our grandparent volunteers, um, not only was Nana, or the home, I looked at she worked on reading, but her husband, Mr. Bill, is also a grandparent volunteer. And he is in the kindergarten classes, um, several days a week, he volunteers with kindergarten. He just provides some extra help, some extra support, social skills, and a lot of hugs, and they love to see Mr. Bill come. And then Nana, not only does she run that AR program, but she helps with popcorn, she helps, um, in the library, she helps with fundraising. They do a fun activity in kindergarten, and just really so much more, anything that we need help with, they are there. So, we're really, really blessed to have that grandparent volunteer program at Pritchard. Um, our high tunnel, I hope that you saw that on your way in. We have, we partner with Rocky Knoll Farms, Jason Ekers, um, who does agriculture here for Wayne County. And also the Marshall Nutrition Program is getting on board this year, they're gonna provide us with, um, some plants and dirt, which, you know, many of you all know, that can get expensive with such a large high tunnel. So, they're actually, Marshall's Program is gonna give us some soil and things that we might need for our high tunnel. The students take that project on, but it can't happen without a really good leader. So, Ms. Dixon, Cindy Dixon, our kindergarten teacher, has kind of just taken that on as a facilitator, but the kids really are the ones who literally are getting their hands dirty. Um, they're the ones who, they really take ownership in that. They're growing vegetables, fruits, flowers, and then in the fall, um, well, and when we have summer school too here, that's been really helpful in just the upkeep, and that's been a part of our summer school growth over the two, three years. But in the fall, when we harvest what they grow, they sell them, so there's that economics deal too. But also, you know, they get to enjoy it as well. And eat, they love to just, those little tomatoes, um, chomp those in, so. We also have a bike club, we've had it for several years, but we're just really proud of it, and because it's unique to our school, we have a large paid, very well-paid track out front. And the bike club uses that track, and of course, we use it as a walking track as well, but, um, we had several, oh gosh, I don't know, fifty bikes out there donated to our school. And the students, it's neat to see it because so many of them have learned how to ride bikes here at Pritchard, here at school, and that's a really cool feeling just to see a kid and help them, you know, reach that important mark in their life. So, just another way to get kids out, get them exercise, get them healthy, and they really, really love them before they do it. Um, last is to spotlight our community involvement, we have such a great and good community right here at Pritchard. You know, over the holidays, we had several churches and individuals provide gifts, clothing, um, and holiday meals, huge baskets of, of food and everything that the families would need to create, to make their holiday meal. Um, gifts for the children, and as we're all passed out, you know, and honestly, as we could, you know. So, that's, there's a lot of local churches, but then some individuals as well provided those. The, um, Good News Club is a, it's offered for any students that would like to go on Wednesdays, it's a church that comes and they just spend their time with the kids. And, um, that's during our after-school program, if you guys don't want to go for that. We have a church also that, um, provides weekend snack bags, I mean, that's something that a lot of schools have going on, and it's really important because, you know, it could be like hours. And as teachers, you know, we worry over the weekend, but you know, what the kids are eating, whether they have enough. So, it, it gives us teachers a peace of mind and also, you know, just supporting our families. Also, our Fall Festival was a big hit, um, two of our teachers put that together, they were actually, they're Pritchard on the haunters. And they remember, you know, how fun the Fall Festivals were when they had children, and they just wanted the kids to have that same feeling. So, it was really, really nice to a lot of community members come out for that, not only to enjoy the games and the food and all that, but, um, we had vendors come. So, that was really neat to just kind of push out that part for the community and support them as well. I have a quick video I'd like to show if that's okay, and then I will just talk about some things moving forward. Also, this, the captions on it are auto-generated, I couldn't change them, but I did feel like they were mostly helpful, but it may not say exactly what the kids saying in some of the parts, but.
What makes Pritchard Elementary so special because all the teachers are so kind and they're friendly, so kind to everyone, so nice and kind. They're cool and welcoming and, and, and everybody's nice and polite and they share with each other and help each other. Good sign.
We're a special family.
Big Mom!
I'm a mom, I love my kids, and I'm a special mom.
The family atmosphere and how much we love our children.
I love the new teachers because I love this town and I love the teachers.
We have the best teachers in the whole county.
He does everybody his best.
Great school, and I love all of our students.
You got to see some of the things I spoke about in that video, so that was really neat to, uh, put that together for you guys. So, I'm just looking forward to a few things we have planned or that we, we've talked about doing. Um, our chicken coop out front was a big part of our school for a long time, um, but we had to get rid of the chickens last year. And we didn't start it up in the fall, we may, um, incubate some more this spring, but really, we're looking for something different to do with it. Um, the kids do love it, but it would be nice just to, um, reinvent it somehow. We're not sure how to do that yet, but of course, we want it tied into, to education before we sold the eggs and, you know, all the science that went into, um, you know, hatching the chickens and things like that. So, we wanted to be educational, we're just looking, kind of, for something a little different, um, for the kids. Also, something I am looking to do, um, this semester is what I'm gonna call Lunch and Warm. And what this would be was we would, we'd invite families to come and have lunch with their child here at school. And then after lunch is over, then we'll do a family session where I can do, or our counselors or support staff could do, um, some kind of, you know, parent education classes with them. Maybe something like internet safety or, um, safety on these devices and things that they have, have a set of boundaries with those devices so they can't just, you know, be a free-for-all. Um, just some things like that, so that's one of the things I want to do too, is a lunch and warm sessions. So, the last thing on all this is just our, some of the needs, and I ask teachers about these things, um, to see what it is that they feel we really need here at Pritchard. And some of these may have been brought up in years prior, but of course, this is my first year, so I'm gonna bring it up again. Fence repairs, we have a huge program, um, probably the biggest one in the county all the time, and it's wonderful, it's a blessing. But because it's so large, we have a large fence as well, and there are areas that are not safe. Holes that need to be patched that dogs aren't able to get in and out of, um, in the community. And heaven forbid, you know, a student would escape out there, of course, we have, you know, we do have some students who, um, have special needs and they may not know, you know, the dangers of that, so that's something we really, um, we have lots of activities. The bathroom stalls in the main hallway down there. They need to be replaced, they're, they're very wonky. But also, the main thing is they're very short, so there's just a real lack of privacy. I think most of our students, when they stand up, you can see over top of them, it's just kind of awkward, and, um, we would like to see those replaced. Now, I know that our bathrooms, a lot of things were being done in there, the seams and plumbing and things like that. So, we're hoping the next step, we're just to replace those stalls. In one of our rooms, there's an area that needs repairing, here the floor. You can kind of see through there, and there's a draft that actually comes through, um, so we'll get that fixed. We have spoken about a safety window in our front office out here, as you guys notice, when you come in, we don't have a man trap. So, if someone were wanting in our building, we have cameras, and we're grateful for that. Um, and we're able to vet people before they come in. Um, but I think, but sometimes the internet doesn't work, which means the cameras don't work. Um, sometimes you can't hear very well, so what we asked for was a safety window from our secretary's office that will be just right out here on the wall, will look straight out. It would almost act as a man trap for us. And we would be able to vet people before they came in the building to see, you know, even just having that five to ten second conversation with somebody, you kind of get a gist of, you know, where they stay, through the sun, see them all. So we would just like to have that window there and to have that face-to-face interaction with people before they enter our building. We do have a few playground needs. Some new mulch this spring. It's been a couple of years since we've spread mulch and, you know, that just doesn't last forever with that much wear and tear. And some repairs to our current play structures. We really, Ms. Williams and I talked today, we're going to have to start looking at, you know, fundraising for new playground equipment. We've had that for years and years, and it's been great. But it is starting to wear down. But if we can just repair a few things on it, then we may be able to get another couple of years out of it. We didn't go towards fundraising for that, so. And then also, lastly, coverage for additional walkways. Years ago, you guys granted us coverage for walkways that, because we do have so many separate buildings here. And it's been fantastic. And I tell you when you really, when I really noticed it was with all this weather, with snow. We could save us so much on, you know, the salt, spreading the salt. We weren't concerned about injuries, like children walking through ice and snow because of those coverings. So it's been fantastic. We just do have a couple of spots we would like to extend that coverage out front where you all hang in. We are unloading and loading students there. And it would be nice just to have an extension from that front walkway out about eight, ten feet so that teachers who are waiting on students can have somewhere to stand and not get soaked wet and snowed on. And students too, while they're waiting on their parents to pick them up. And then another area between the annex buildings out here is not covered. And it would just be nice because when students are traveling from the gym to the library or to the art room, speech, and our counseling, they do have to go, if the weather's bad, they have to go. They have to run through the rain. So those are just a few of the needs. Some of them, of course, are a higher priority than others. But we just appreciate you guys considering those for us. And thank you again for coming out. I'll be welcome. I'll be glad to answer any questions you online have. I encourage you to take a little tour of the school while you're here. Check out our AR board out front. And thank you all so much for coming to Pritchard. If you come back anytime.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Why can't I put that screen up in here? You have any questions?
The intent said it was a press.
Maybe this isn't.
Yeah, that's right.
I think, I love, I think it really has a lot to do with our culture.
Right.
When parents come to pick up their students, like, you know, we've got to do this as well. They can't, like, they don't want to go.
Right.
So I don't think that just has a lot for our staff.
Are you, are you able to, I guess, to, our, our, our.
Yes, I meant to say that. When we do our PLCs, one of the things, actually Toni was just here last week. And she did a science of reading.
Right.
Yeah, so she, because the third person. We're, I taught that too, literature for a while. And it's just hard to know, like, how do you teach these poor kids that are struggling with reading? It's funny, skills are typically kindergarten level. So how do we do that? And she's really, she's going to come back actually a few more times and. And me too, I've been in there too because I love that as well. And then of course, I've had Jeff, so they've been awesome. They've been great, they've got so much support from the cardigan. Wow. Yeah, that's impressive. I've never, I've been teaching for twenty years, I've never seen that kind of support from a curriculum team. Says, yeah. Yeah, I mean, look at our math scores, that's what I said. To have that good a math score with a random curriculum, you would think you might have a little drop or something.
No, not for everybody come in.
Yeah, we've got some rock star teachers.
Guys, there's such a great, if you all want to send.
Yeah, if you want one, you can send.
Okay.
Few more questions?
So, anything else, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to?
Did you all follow?
We did.
Yeah, we're following.
Stop, no, no, no. Diet, if you got it.
Okay, those folks that have joined us online, we're going to switch streams now for the regular meeting. And so you'll be able to pick it up on a different stream. We'll create it here in about five minutes.